Evening, everyone. Thank you for joining us. Tonight is the October 11, 2018 Voting and Workshop Meeting for East Fishkill Town Board. Would you all please rise for the pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. It is a voting meeting. I asked the town clerk, thank you for coming, by the way. We have one resolution to do. It is time-sensitive. That's why we are voting on it tonight. I only have one announcement before we begin. We have had a lot of vandalism at our parks lately, namely Hopewell Rec and Red Wing. And unfortunately, they, we don't know who, but they are going and they are throwing equipment and chairs and playground equipment into the lake. And they're destroying, I'd say, tables and picnic tables and other things. And also in the Hopewell Rec last week, unfortunately, they went into the bathrooms and they destroyed some of the sinks in there with hammers. And they destroyed some of the mirrors in there. And it's very unfortunate. We try to keep those open late because we do have late leagues that play. And I think now we're going to, I've told the maintenance department, after they clean the bathrooms at four o'clock to lock them. I'm sorry for what this causes, but unfortunately, that's what we have to do. If anybody has any information on anybody that they hear has done any of this vandalism, please call the East Fishkill Police, 221-2111. Please, if you hear anything or see anything, please call. That's the only announcement I have. With that, I'll open the voting meeting and the workshop meeting. Do we have to have a roll call? Could you call the roll, please?
Councilperson Cassidy.
Present.
Councilperson Marinero.
Present.
Councilperson Franco.
Present.
Councilperson Beepin.
Present.
Supervisor Delisandro.
Present. Thank you. And the only resolution tonight is authorizing grant application for the Red Wing Bath House Accessibility Improvements. The town is requesting authorization to apply for the Community Development Block Grant for the Red Wing Bath House Accessibility Improvements. And this hearing held today, October 11, 2018, is to receive comments about a grant application that could be made to the CDBG for the Community Development Block Grant Funding from Dutchess County. And that the Town Board does hereby authorize a submission of an application to the Community Development Block Grant Funding Program of Dutchess County for the Red Wing Bath House Accessibility Improvements. And that the supervisor and all other officials of the town are authorized to take all steps necessary to effectuate this application. So, this application is due by October 19. And that is the reason why we needed to do this resolution tonight. Do I have a motion to accept this, to authorize a grant application for the Red Wing Bath House Accessibility?
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Discussion. So, we did receive $40,000 from Dutchess County for the MIG grant, which we're very happy about. But that is only maybe a quarter of the way to get us to fund, to do the new bathrooms. So, the Community Development Block Grant, I believe, can give us up to $100,000. So with that, we would be probably close to funding the whole project. I'm hopeful that we'll get it. If we don't get the whole $100,000, then we, as the board can discuss, if we'd like to spend some dollars from the
Rec Development.
Rec Development Funds to finish it. But I think that it's sorely needed. I'm sure all of us have seen those bathrooms. And we want to make it more totally accessible for all people. And I think this is going to be great. I think that we have a good chance of getting it. So, I'm happy to, that we pass this resolution today. Any other comments?
Nick, we are going to be re-apping the present bathrooms over there, or is this going to be a new construction?
No, that'll be renovating those bathrooms there.
Okay.
So, yeah, what we did was, I had Jan McHugh and Rick Witt, they did speak to the grants, the people who are in charge of the grants for the CDBG, Ann Saylor up at the county. And they can change the scope of work for the MIG grant, which we already received, to go along with this grant. So, I'm hopeful we will get it. Any other comments? Don't? Okay, we have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Thank you very much. And do I have a motion to close the voting meeting?
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Voting meeting closed. Thank you, Madam Clerk. The work session.
We should have done that last.
So, we should have done it last and let her wait? That's not nice, Peter. So, we have two items on the agenda for discussion tonight is our budget. Our budget public hearing is October 25, which is in two weeks. And I figured this is a proper time to have our workshop on it. I have made some charts behind me, which is inside the budget packet that I've given everyone. So, everyone knows, I gave the Town Board the proposed budget on September 27. I feel that my administration and I, we've given a quality budget to the Town Board and to the citizens of East Fishkill. Thanks to our comptroller, thank you very much for your assistance and your help. Our budget does not exceed the New York State imposed tax cap. I focused on items that our board and residents have discussed with us, what is top priority, such as more paving, town safety, recreational services. I feel those three are key ingredients in our Good Place to Live soup. So, you know, those are three key ingredients that I believe. Everyone knows that we have a commitment to clean water and to expand our infrastructure for water and sewer, which we are constantly doing, which we also have a discussion, our second discussion is, about our water projects. This is constantly in our mess, even though we have the New York State imposed tax cap, which really limits our abilities as a municipality to grow. But we still continue to add dollars where we think is important, especially the three that I said, paving, town safety, and recreation. So, like I said before, with paving, the number-one issue, I have added an additional $100,000 this year to that budget. Two years ago, the paving budget was at $500,000, last year $600,000, and this proposed budget is $700,000. So if we could keep going in that way, we can do more paving. Unfortunately, it's still not enough, but it's what we have. So, until we can come up with other sources of revenue, this is how we have to live. But we are doing our best. Public safety is a big concern, everybody knows. We just hired an additional police officer last month. And we had four promotions this year, too. So, you know, I think that, which those promotions were sorely needed, we were having a lack of supervisors. And that can affect our public safety. So, you know, we're committed, we're committed to improving the public safety best we can. Recreation is a key ingredient, too. Everybody uses recreation, children, adults, seniors, everybody. I think that to have a good quality of life, we need that mix. So those are the three biggest ticket items. And I think that we've done a good job addressing it. But, you know, the New York State imposed tax cap is a hindrance, but we have not exceeded it with this budget. So, the board has had the budget for two weeks now. And I hope you have reviewed it, which I know you have. I've had questions already. But any discussion? Can we have a discussion on that? No discussion.
Nobody wants to say anything. Well, I just want to, I want to say thank you to the supervisor and to Mark, our comptroller. I sat in on one of the meetings when there was, we had to trim $650,000.
Oh, yeah.
And it was about three hours. And it's not easy. It's not easy because every department needs something and every department had to get something cut, so.
Yeah, thank you, Councilman. He stopped and Mark and I were diligently cutting.
No, it's, it's a tough endeavor. It certainly is. Yeah, but thank you. It's nice and lean.
Yes, it is. We spend wisely in town, so I don't know where else we could find anything where to save. But if you have suggestions, that's what we're here for.
I've been out in the community a lot lately. And the number-one complaint I get is the lack of paved roads or new roads. So, the fact that we're adding money to our paving budget is definitely heading in the right direction. Thank you.
So, just briefly, I know that we have worked, Nick and Mark, you guys did a great job with the budget containing costs. So even though we stayed under the tax cut, we did, I believe, raise taxes by 3.1%, right? Based, compared to 2018, I think.
Yeah, the total levy is going up 2.6%.
Six six.
But the townwide tax, I'm expecting, yes, to be 3.1%.
So basically, that's going to be, like, stated in the budget, about $30 for the property that is worth, a house that is worth about $300,000. And I would say that that probably would double to $60 for a property that is worth about $500,000 or more, correct? Right?
Well, you could say for $600,000.
Right. So, looking at this, I believe our total budget is about $23 million. And our fund balance is about $2 million.
General fund and fund balance is about $2 million.
Right. Mark, can you give us, you know, just an illustration of the importance of a healthy fund balance? And where do you feel comfortable our fund balance should be at? Just give us an idea for the people watching tonight, so that
Sure. Frequently, when we talk about fund balance, we're really just talking about general fund balance. It's important for a couple of reasons. One is that we have expenditures in the beginning part of the year before we've received our first revenues. Usually, property taxes are the first thing to come in. So we need to be able to operate the town before we've started to realize our revenues. We do that by using fund balance, which is sort of a accumulated savings over time. The other biggest reason we need to have fund balances in case something happens that we didn't expect, that we didn't expect, maybe revenues didn't come in and we were expecting them to. Or maybe we have a big storm and we have to have emergency action that costs a certain amount of money. We use fund balance to make up gaps in the budget or to allow us to do unexpected activities. Usually, we want at least two months' worth of expenses in your fund balance. We've typically talked about 15% to 25% of the total appropriations for the year. So, that's about $1.9 million to about $3 million or so. We're at $2 million. So we're in a good spot right now. And that's grown from four years ago, when it was about $1.1 million. So the Town Board has been very prudent. We've held taxes low. And over these years, we've been able to build up fund balance to a more comfortable range. The reason you don't want to have too much fund balance is it's a sign that we've overtaxed the population. Right? The property tax, or the taxpayers are probably paying too much. So we don't want to have unlimited amount of fund balance either. But we're in a good spot, but we could use maybe a little bit more over time.
So also, you know, our realized numbers aren't until March for the previous year?
Yeah, we don't really know the full extent of a year until the following March.
So, we've taken a brief look at it, but we probably will increase our fund balance slightly with the realized numbers.
We're expecting in 2018 to increase fund balance a little bit more.
So, which will be good. And, you know, like the comptroller said, this is our rainy day fund, shall you, shall we say. But our budgets are our best guess, what we think, think what will happen, so.
So that's LT. And I guess you are happy we're going with a fund balance because, you know, we're in a good spot. And God willing, if nothing disastrous happens in the community, we'll be better off probably going forward.
Right. And if something were to happen, we could handle it right now. That's right.
One place we do have to work on, which is difficult right now, is our fund balance for our highway department, for our highway budget. So, that's a big challenge because we try to utilize all the dollars we can for paving. So, but we have to put a plan in action to increase that.
So, Mark, I have just a couple of notes that I took. If we could look on page six, we're 5410. This year, we have sidewalks. I've noticed that in 2017, that item over there, we're at zero balance. Now we have a projected $15,000, which, are we adding anything that we didn't have before? Or what is this about?
Yeah, I think that particular year, we couldn't get anyone to provide the sidewalk services, which is mostly plowing in the winter. So, we went out
Sidewalks on our farm, we discussed this.
We solicited contractors to submit bids and no one, we couldn't get anyone to, so that was not a good year necessarily. Even though, I mean, I'm happy to spend nothing, but there's a consequence and
Okay.
So this is something that we always provide in the budget?
We've always provided it. That was an unusual year.
Okay. And on page seven, 7180, that's Special Recreation Facility. Which one is this?
That's Red Wing, Red Wing Park.
Oh, that's Red Wing. Okay. So, again, I guess the total increase over there or the projected increase for 2019, is that mainly due to the minimum wage increase?
That's right.
Mostly, yeah.
And we did talk with the recreation directors about a corresponding increase in fees for programs that are directly affected by the minimum wage increase.
Yeah, we will be increasing fees at the camp and Red Wing also, again, this year.
Again, on the same page, I believe is 7140. That's Playground and Recreation Center. The 2017 was 594,675. And there is a slight increase over there. Is this, what does this entail, Mark?
Okay, so this is really all the playground and recreation facilities. So it's all the different parks, soccer fields, football fields, baseball fields. It's the gazebo, it's the different little
Staffing.
The staff to maintain all of these items. It includes the Lime Kill numbers. Now, the 2017 actual number of 594 is slightly understated. There was a correction we made that year. You see the negative $39,000. That was, we adjusted an expense to be a rec development expense. So, you know, it's really, it's not increasing as much as it might appear from that year to 2019.
So this is the maintenance of all the grounds, groundskeeping?
All the grounds. And it also has the Lime Kill building as well.
Okay. In the past, that building, we used to have it by itself.
Well, it's, no, it's always been in here. It is segregated. You'll see the LMK after. So, it's all part of this one department. But it's broken out within that.
And on page nine, I think it's 8510, that's the Community Beautification. Again, I see it almost, I believe, that is a 50% increase projected for the 2019. I know that at one time, the highway superintendent wanted to do away with that program over there.
No, we cut that.
It's actually, yeah, it's being reduced from a $15,000 budget to a $9,000.
Okay, but actually, 2017 was 597. So now we're projecting a $9,000.
Yeah, well, last year was, this year was $15,000.
Yeah, and I think we had budgeted
Cut it down to $9,000.
We had budgeted, let's say, $11,000 in 2017. It just wasn't spent. And it may not be spent in 2019 either. It's
I mean, isn't that really, that's just
It's flowers and
Flowers, flags, banners. Do the flags and banners come out of there, too? American flags. Yeah, like the poles.
Yes, but not the hometown hero banners.
Right.
Right.
The American flags.
Yeah.
And the light, no, the lights, one of the three lights.
It's mostly, it's mostly flowers and things, either here on town properties or around town
Bells, amlets.
Signs and things like that.
The two seasons.
Again, I don't know, Nick, I remember the previous, I had suggested to do away with that. I mean, that's some saving that you could do over there.
Yeah, it's $9,000. It's $9,000. I don't know if we'll even hit that. But we do, there is some improvement we have to make behind the building here with, we need some shrubbery and a couple of other things. But I don't even know if we'll spend that because we cut back this year also, so.
Just while we're on this page.
And I'm sorry to interrupt you, but whatever we don't spend, it's budgeted for, goes to fund balance. So, like the comptroller said, that in 2017, the actual number was 4597. But we budgeted $11,000. So the change, the difference, went into fund balance. Whatever we don't spend in any line goes to fund balance automatically. Is that correct, right, Mark?
Yes.
I'm sorry, Councilman.
It's quite all right. So I noticed that we cut the budget for the cemetery fund. What is the purpose?
So I spoke to the highway superintendent about that. And he has agreed to have his men do that, do those services for us.
And Mark, on page 10, 9720. Does that cover all bonds, interest on bonds, that line item over there?
Yes.
Installation on the bonds.
This is
9720?
Exclusively the Cannon property. So that's when we purchased across the street. This debt is, that's what that is entirely.
So actually, in 2017, are we looking at a zero over there compared to 2019?
Well, that's when it was a bond anticipation note. So if you look right below that
Has a $60,000.
It became an installment bond in 2018. Prior to that, it's listed on the line below. It's a bond anticipation note. So we paid $60,000 in principal and $20,000 in interest. So we paid $80,000 in 2017. In 2018, it became a serial bond, installment bond. And so it just shifts, it's a different code in the accounting chart of accounts. That's all.
Is there any particular bond that we are talking about? Which bond are we
That's part of the bond package we did when we reduced the
When you refinanced.
Where we refinanced everything?
Yeah. So it's, the question was, what was the bond used for?
Right.
To purchase the property across the street.
Still across, across from town. How much longer do we have to pay that?
Like 23 years, I think.
23 more years?
Yeah. So if we decide as a Town Board to sell a portion of the property, then the sale price, payback bond, and then the remainder goes to fund balance.
What is the principle on that? We're in, Mark?
What's owed on it?
Right.
He's figuring that.
Off the top of my head, I'm going to say $900,000, something like that.
Because we paid some back.
We paid, when we sold off a portion, we paid a chunk down then, more than what we would have owed otherwise that year.
And just one last thing. On page two of the highway budget, 5142.
Okay.
So, snow removal over there.
Yes.
I see there is a little bit of an increase compared to 2017. Is that projected for buying salt and sand?
Again, you know, this, so we've used roughly a million as a baseline year to year. And it, we may adjust that up if we are expecting higher than normal salt and maybe adjust it down. But we sort of go into every year thinking about a million. Sometimes, it may only be $600,000. But we don't adjust too much up and down from there. And I would say, eight out of 10 years, it's actually below that, but
Okay. And last year, we adjusted it somewhat? I mean, was it?
Well, if you look at it this year, we're at 875 almost, a little more.
But
So we just purchased salt, which we're going to be over that number. But that salt should last as well into 19, unless we have a big calamity. But the 670, if you look at that 2017 actual, if we remember, this Town Board, we did, we had extra dollars from that year for snow. And we did, we moved it to paving. And we also did something, we added something else from paving also that year. We bought, oh, the salt purchase.
I don't think we moved it to paving. We could have, right?
I think, yeah, we did, was it the salt?
So in, there was a year where we had to purchase a bunch of salt that we didn't need. It was a fairly mild winter. We had committed to a significant amount of salt. And it was fairly
Three years ago?
Yes. So, the year following that, we knew we weren't going to need to buy salt. So we were going to move that salt money to paying down a paving ban, a one-year ban that we took out. Because if I recall correctly, the cost of asphalt was cheap that year. And we thought, let's take advantage of this good price.
And plus, the year we did Lake Walton Road. So that's the money that we spent. I think it was $800,000 probably, right? About that, yeah.
Yeah.
Well, I remember. That was the money that was, savings was to pave Lake Walton Road, yeah.
But typically, it's always, we put in a million. Any other questions, concerns, anywhere you think, save anywhere else? If you see the charts behind me, I prepared those charts. You see the trending, the spending trends. You know, we're pretty flat. We don't really increase that much. You know, at the beginning of the budget process, the comptroller called and said that the tax cap, I don't remember what the exact figure was, but he said, "We'll generate $300 and some odd thousand without breaking, exceeding the tax cap." And I says, "Oh, that's good." He says, "That's better than last year." He says, "But don't get too excited. We have over half a million in new obligations." So, it's good news and bad news, I guess. But as you see in the budget notes, that minimum wage is increasing from $10.40 to $11.10. That, you see that in the budget lines, like Councilman Marinero pointed out. Each year, the minimum wage will increase 70 cents until it reaches $15. That was passed by the New York State Legislature. And that's the law now. So, we do, though, we do get a little award from the county for our Drug Task Force participation of about $160,000. And about $80,000 from Whopper's essential schools for our SRO program, which is, which is great. If you look also behind me, I put the percentages, where did the property taxes go? The major, the biggest tax portion is our school taxes. On average, it's about 76%. Different school districts, it's even higher. Carmel, Halling, it's even higher. So, this is an average. Our county takes about 11% of your tax dollars. The town, on average, 10%. So, we run the whole town on 10% of your tax bill. Our police department, our recreation, our highway department, everything you see, town hall, we do on 10% of your taxes. So, I think that we do a good job spending your money. If you look at how it is being divided up, 34% does go to our police department, 32% to our highway department, and the other 34% broken up between recreation and our town hall. So, you know, it is what it is. But I think that we, all in all, So, you know, it is what it is, but I think that we, all in all, do a very good job. Like the councilman said, we have about thirty-dollar increase on an average home. It's, uh, it is thirty dollars, and I'm happy that it's not more than that, but can it be less? I wish it could be.
One day.
Especially for seniors and, you know, people struggling. It's, it's hard, but we, we do have a first-rate police department and recreational services and a highway department, that we, we've really been doing a lot, so I'm proud of all the departments. Any other comments?
No, just like to congratulate you on doing a good job. Mark keeping you in line, I remember years ago when the fund balance was higher, I remember when it was lower, and we'd get hit with some big things, and we do need it, and we actually got, they questioned it in the audit we did a couple of years ago, but.
Mark doesn't like to spend money.
You think.
That's good.
You think he's cheap with our money, try to get some money out of him. It's probably even worse.
It's like getting money out of you.
So I'll just say one other thing, it helps our credit rating.
Credit rating, big time.
You know, and so that gets us lower, just having a healthy fund balance, and one of the things they look at.
Absolutely. Well, we do have our public hearing, our next meeting, October twenty-fifth, so obviously, we talked to the comptroller, to myself, any suggestions for changes, please, please let us know. With that, we are gonna have a discussion on our town-wide water improvements. So everybody at your place, we have a map that the town engineer has provided, with a little description connected to that on all the town projects that are underway and proposed. We, this is a lot of moving parts, and it is a little confusing sometimes to keep up. I'll, I admit that it's, you know, difficult for myself, I have to ask the question a few times sometimes for the engineer to clarify for myself, but he's doing a good job, and we have a lot going on, as everybody sees. With that, engineer, would you like to take it from there?
Sure. As the supervisor said, I provided a map, I know there's been questions by different folks, you know, out in the public, you know, to the councilmen, trying to get a, you know, a handle where all the projects are, how do they connect to one another, what, what the purpose is, so we provided this map as a, as a working tool tonight, so hopefully I can answer any questions that come up. And you can see how one project relates to another, so I'll just give you a minute to, to take a look at that if you want. What we, we tried to break it out into projects that are already underway and projects that are still proposed and have not yet been awarded or put out to bid.
Okay. So, yeah, I'd just make a comment that next month, we will be setting a public hearing for the formation of a new water improvement district, Route eighty-two improvement district, to go hand in hand with our project, the EPA project that's going on. Unfortunately, we have to lay out all the money to do this project before the federal government reimburses us. So it was, I remember when I was a councilman and Mr. Hickman was the supervisor, it was a little contentious because they don't give us any real guarantee. It's pretty much a handshake deal, right? So it's the faith of the federal government that we are relying on.
Yeah, there's a letter.
There's a letter, but, you know.
It's not a formal contractual agreement, but it's basically a letter, yeah.
And basically, as a project has been going on, the costs have been increasing, and I'm sure anybody in construction knows that, the costs are out of sight right now. So, um, that's one, that's, I just wanted to mention that because I'll be putting that on the next agenda for a public hearing to form a new water improvement area, but it's also in the memo, and we'll have much more discussion about that, I'm sorry, engineer.
Yep, no problem. So basically, the, the projects that we have them going on, if I were to, to separate them, we have the projects that are associated with bringing water to the EPA Superfund Project up on Ryan Drive. Those projects are the Canwell Connection, the Tolbin connection to Fishkill Road, along with the proposed Hamlet Water Treatment Expansion Project. Those three projects are necessary to provide the water that we have to for the Ryan Drive area. And then on the other side of that, we have the projects associated with Fishkill Plains and supplying water to Revere Park and Whirly Homes. So the Whirly Home Projects and Revere Park Projects, they're the ones in red on the left-hand side, we haven't awarded any of those or finished the design of any of those, we're still in, uh, working on the formation of the District of Whirly Homes, so that, that's still a work in progress. We have moved forward with the Fishkill Plains well rehab, and, and that's in the, on the upper side there. We've done the rehab, we're, the well pumps have, have just arrived, it took, they had to be custom-built, we're upsizing the well pumps, and there's been a ongoing dialogue right now with the DEC to make sure that we can actually do this pump test, and the reason is because we've had so much rain, the concern has been whether they were gonna skew the results. So we hope to have an answer on that very shortly. We're tentatively scheduled to get the well pumps installed next week and do the pump test there the week after, but we're still waiting for the DEC to, to make sure that they're gonna accept the results that we get.
So that goes hand in hand with the Whirly Homes, so, you know, the.
And that's part of Whirly, that's part of Revere, and, and the rehab portion, yes. Now, today, met with.
Town of Wapinger.
Town of Wapingers, their engineer and their water operator, there's been, I'll let the supervisor just kinda.
So everybody knows we are in talks and negotiations to have shared services, should I say, with other towns for water and sewer, infrastructure, and where we can help each other. So the engineer had a meeting with the engineer from Wapinger, Town of Wapinger, and they were looking to see where we could help provide them interconnections to some of their systems. Well, so happened that we possibly can benefit from one of their, to, to connect to one of their water systems, they have source, they have redundancy, they have what else?
Capacity.
Capacity.
Source capacity and, and storage.
So those are the three key ingredients. Possibly, this could be another source for Whirly Homes. Now, this is gonna take a little bit more time to do, but it can lessen the cost for the, for the, for the people there, but we don't know how it's going to tie in with the borrowing that we have in place right now for that project. So the first thing I said to the engineer was, that's great, if we could save a couple hundred thousand, we could use that to do more pipe in, in the interior of the project, but he said that there's caps that the, the funding has.
Percentages of source versus onsite piping.
So that two hundred thousand could put us over the percentage that we're allowed to do more of.
Which just means that any of that excess money, we wouldn't get advantage of the low interest rate.
So the interest rate could be higher if we do that, we would save money on one side, but lose it on another with the interest rate. So we're gonna vet it out, he's gonna, go ahead.
Right, right, we have to do a thorough analysis of that to see whether, you know, it makes sense or not, you know, on one hand, we're buying water from another town, which maybe that's not a bad thing, but on, on another hand, we may be able to save money on infrastructure expense and, and keep the rates lower, but there's still a lot more information, this just occurred today, so over the next week or two, we'll be trying to get as much information, we don't know what their rate structure is, you know, but if it's viable, we'll, we'll propose that as an alternative.
So let me ask the attorney if that was, if this is a possibility, we have closed the public hearing, and with the caveat that we closed the public hearing, that we had two sources to choose from because we were doing the seventy-two hour pump test, if this is a third choice, we'll have to reopen the public hearing?
It's possible you might, yes.
Okay.
Very good.
So with that, are there any questions? I'm here to answer questions, you know, that anyone might have on.
How's the Superfund one going? Are they ever gonna get across Wardkill Creek? Across the creek?
They're having trouble with an elevated water table.
Still, it's gotta be getting worse.
They've proposed doing more directional drilling, we, we've had them do some geotechnical investigation to make sure that, that's feasible, they're not gonna have any damage to the pipe, that, that's been done, we've consented to that. Now it's, and the EPA's in the Army Corps of Corps to, I think they're working on a possible change order to help, you know, facilitate that. They say they're gonna finish that phase this year, I don't, I don't know if that's really gonna happen or not, they're, they're trying to, but that, again, that's just the first phase, that's the main trunk line, the tank is started up on Dogwood Road, so they're moving along. And also, I might mention, and I guess we'll get into that in a minute, or maybe we wanna get into it now, as far as the Route eighty-two improvement area, you know, we had spoke that initially, and this goes back three years ago, it was gonna be, there was just gonna be an initial investment, but when they went back and looked at all what they can and can't do, you know, they determined that they can't do an initial buy-in. We had done an, an original townwide improvement area, that assumed that we were gonna get a buy-in from them, we've kind of been using that as a piggy bank to, to get the projects off the ground, we, we didn't wanna go back and extend that or, or change anything until we got a better handle on what the cost was gonna be, because we didn't wanna keep going back and, you know, increasing, increasing it. So now we have two projects that have been, we know what those, we have hard numbers on those projects, and now we're trying to finalize the, the last piece, which is the filtration and booster project, but until we have final Board of Health approval, and we know, because they keep, you know, a lot of things that, what we did in Fishkill Plains four years ago with that filtration system, that was accepted back then, there's different people reviewing it today, and what worked then doesn't work today, and they want the bells and the whistles, so, you know, that, along with material escalation and, and, you know, contractor prices going up, so we wanted to wait till we had a good handle on, on the final cost before we came in and did a, did a final borrowing, so that's about where we're at now.
Could I just clarify one thing, I just wanna be sure we're all comfortable with, the work that EPA, that's being done on the EPA line now is direct funded by the United States government, we don't have to lay out that money. So what we're talking about is we have a.
A connection.
A letter, the whole project that the EPA is doing is premised on their ability to make a connection into our water system at a given point. So the money that, where we would wait for reimbursement is to reimburse us for having the water available at that time, but they have no other source of water, so that, that should raise your comfort level that they have to put it in. Number two, they do have a budgeted item in their budget for the buy-in cost, so it's fully recognized, and we do have a letter from the Regional Director indicating that they agree with the formula, because as Scott indicated, the cost changes with increases, so it's not a flat number, but it's a formula that Scott and the EPA came to an agreement on that provides how they will fund us for that water. So before we turn on the valve, we're coming.
We get paid.
So the likelihood of them, you know, unless it's like the bridge in Alaska, but I mean, the likelihood of them not proceeding with all those lines and then, or proceeding with all those lines and not connecting to the water is highly unlikely, so that's, I just wanted to clarify that.
Yeah, their project, I think, is somewhere around twenty-five million dollars.
Yeah, thank you for clarifying that, it's not, we're not funding the whole twenty-five million.
Turn around and not pay their connection fee, I think.
We're, we're talking about a four million dollar.
Four and a half, yeah, four, a little four.
And they have it in their budget in that twenty-five million, I don't want anyone to lose sleep over that tonight.
So we had a cap also on our townwide water improvement area that we currently have, that we can't exceed, this is another reason why we have to form another improvement area. That current improvement area, we have multiple projects, that's why he has broken them down here, we've shared the cost, that's why we have the improvement area, because it helps many different districts, so that's, we've been using that, and we don't have enough in there left to finish this leg of the project.
So Scott, as far as buying water from the Town of Wapingers, we've done it before, I believe we're buying water from Fishkill from the Shenandoah. So I know it's a little premature, but do you have any idea the cost savings, have you guys spoke about that, or that's not something that?
No, today was just whether it was feasible, we did basically just, today was the first day that I come, we came to understand each other's needs, and in the past, we haven't really looked to go beyond our border, we, we really haven't wanted to be dependent on, on other towns, you know, for our water. But I know the supervisors have met, and I think there's a, a change of trying to share services and ultimately save, save money, and, and this might be an opportunity to do that.
Well, it's expensive to, the storage, the capacity, it's expensive, so if.
Yeah.
If we can utilize something they have available.
Absolutely.
And the cost is good.
And the benefit to them.
For our residents.
The benefit to them is, as you know, we did a temporary connection to the Dutch's Transmission Main.
That's right.
On Walton Road. If we ran that pipe and connected to Wapinger, then they would have the ability to get water from the county, which they currently don't have, in case they had an emergency, we could feed the water the other way, so it's attractive to them as well.
Right, that's advantageous for them, remember, we needed to do the emergency connection, so that cost that we have now possibly can aid other towns like Wapingers if that is a connection point.
Right, right, and, and, and just, you know, again, it's, this is all new, but potentially, we talked previously about running a line up three-seventy-six.
Right.
We may, as opposed to running that line, run the line on Old Hopeville Road, because again, we have to rehab the wells again, we can possibly get the water from Wapinger instead of from the Hamlet, so I mean, we have to do some modeling, you have to do, do an analysis, but it just gives us more options.
So you'll have more for us by next meeting.
And also, maybe, just to respond, I think, we have had some issues with the purchase of water, that agreement was not an agreement that the Town of East Fishkill negotiated or was party to, that was, if you remember, that Superfund site in Shenandoah, it was not the EPA doing the work, they forced IBM to do it. IBM then went and negotiated an agreement with Fishkill, that was then thrust upon East Fishkill when we took over that water system, which we were required to do because the EPA doesn't operate systems, and neither could IBM. So there are many lessons we've learned from that agreement that we wouldn't have, obviously, in this other agreement, and that agreement was ambiguous with respect to, there was a capital contribution made, how it was allocated, it doesn't specifically address storage.
Storage.
Those were all things that with Wapinger, we could hammer out a very fair and equal agreement for all of us, so, but I think that's what your concern may have been, so.
So the other question I have is the wells that we're still working on, Fishkill Plains, hypothetical, if something goes wrong within the next couple of years with those wells, we do have a school over there that we supply water with.
We have the emergency connection that we made to the county, so we can always access that.
Well, that's, that's a. County will allow us, I told it, they were, they were having a hard time even now to utilize the line.
We've done it one time, and we have a relationship with them now, it, if there was an emergency, like you said, they would be inclined to.
So with the lawyer being over here tonight, would it be something that we could put in plan now, if in case, contractual agreement, if in case something happens that?
I, I don't think our problem is getting an agreement for the water, I think our problem's been with the Health Department, because the Health Department's taking a position, it can only be temporary, it can't be permanent.
Right.
So.
The facility that we installed was not to the typical standard of a permanent installation, they, they accepted it as, as strictly a temporary, if it's permanent, it's a lot more.
Detailed and more expensive.
But it's not to say that if we had another emergency, we couldn't do the same thing again.
Right.
You know, but, I mean, this is one of the things we're gonna explore, is if we made the connection to Wapinger, does that become our redundancy, you know, versus tying into the Hamlet, you know, these are, these are the things we're gonna have to do.
We have to think about, right.
See what the pressure is, because based on certain directions and the size of pipes we have, you know, we know it'll definitely handle Whirly and Revere, the question is, if we tie into Wapinger, could it actually feed Fishkill Plains if those wells went down, that, that we have to take a look at.
But the mere fact of having the connection is gonna give the town much greater flexibility with these systems, as does all these other pipes, because now you, you're not just an island on your own, with the water system, something goes down, you got a big problem.
I don't know, does that qualify as shared service, you know?
It could be.
Because there was discussion that grant money might be available.
Yeah, we could, definitely, yeah, we could definitely apply for the next round, for next year, for sure. Any shared service, they ask.
Saves money, they'll give you a grant for it, so.
Yeah. It saves multiple municipalities' dollars, so we'll apply for that.
Well, yeah, it does, because it gives them more benefit units, because these are, Whirly Homes are all new benefit units to the town.
Right.
You know, we're not collecting from them right now, so whether they pay us, or they.
Pay the system, Wapinger system, right.
You know, it, it's not decreasing our revenue stream, so this would be the ideal time, you know, to do that.
Well, they would, the, the, the Town of Wapingers would be building the Town of East Fishkill, and then we will be building.
Unbuild.
So they will now be. So they will now be paying directly to the Town of Wappingers, okay.
We read the meters, there'll be a master meter, we'll be charged for the master amount, and then we bill individually.
It's still in East Fishkill Water District.
And we will have to contract it out, the rates at different times, right, Mark?
Any other questions? Concerns, thoughts? No? It's a little, uh, it's a little confusing, but...
Map helps.
The map helps, because, yeah, you could...
Thank you, yeah.
You visually, you know, see where, where it is and what it does, it's a little easier. So, uh, thank you for supplying the map, and, uh, we're, uh, this is, it's, water and sewer comes up every day.
If you want on the website, we could post some...
Oh, yeah, that'd be great, yes, we'll, we'll post everything on the website, so we can, uh, so the residents could see where the districts are and where the mains are and everything else. If you have any questions moving forward, we discuss this every day, so.
I heard you became our local expert.
Oh, yeah, I don't know about that. I'm happy to have the engineer help. Sound okay? With that... Oh, we have just opened discussion. Anyone wish to discuss any, anything going on? No reports, just a, just discussion, general discussion? Does anybody have anything to say? No? Okay, well, with that, I'll close the work session. Our next town board meeting is going to be October twenty-fifth, two thousand and eighteen. We have a few public hearings that night. One is going to be, uh, for our zoning amendments, and number two is going to be, well, the first one actually is going to be our budget, public hearing, number two will be the zoning amendment. So that's October twenty-fifth, two thousand and eighteen, seven PM at Town Hall. With that, close the public, close the work session, thank you all.